We call to order the Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting of August 22, 2013. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico with the essential perp expression of my United Constitution.
First item on the agenda is to approve the special meeting agenda. So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Let's start with the public hearing today. This is a discussion regarding an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of the $339,000 of Grant County, New Mexico Utility System Revenue Bonds Series 2013 for the purpose of acquiring, extending, enlarging, bettering, repairing, and otherwise improving water and/or wastewater system improvements in the North Hurley area, and two, paying costs of the issuance related to the bonds, authorizing pledge of certain utility system revenues related to the North Hurley improvements towards repayment of the Series 2013 bonds. Anthony, I know you've got something else you need to go do. You want to just go over that real quick for us and we'll let you go for the day.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is part of a USDA grant loan combination funding for North Hurley's wastewater treatment, actually not a treatment facility, but it's actually a pumping station. We want to try and alleviate some of the concerns that we've got with the current wastewater treatment facility out there in North Hurley, and we want to send that to the Tri-City wastewater treatment plant, the effluent from North Hurley. It's been a long time coming. I think this project's been on the radar for about two years, and I think that we're actually seeing the end of the tunnel. I think after the ordinance is enacted and in place, the next thing we'll do is actually with USDA, we'll actually close on all the funding. The revenue stream that's going to actually pay for this, bonds, will be from the association setup. I think it's actually a combination type association for water and wastewater. That's where the revenues will come from. That's correct. I think that the only, if there's a question about anything from Grant County, I think that the only monies that will come from Grant County may be for maintenance of the facility itself.
Thank you, Anthony. You can go to the next meeting. This is Christopher Murhead of Modell-Sperling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our role as a bond counsel to the county, our specialty is public finance matters, borrowing monies, public investments, things of that nature. We do multiple USDA deals a year, and our role is to make sure that the county or the issuer is in compliance with state laws and issuance of debt, any SEC requirements, and most importantly, because these are tax-exempt bonds, meaning the interest on these bonds is exempt from taxation, that we comply with a multitude of IRS rules and regulations. So the ordinance in front of you is what is known as a bond ordinance, which authorizes issuance of the debt. The bond is basically just the debt instrument that is traditionally issued by a governmental body, incurring the debt, in this case up to the amount of $339,000, over a period of 40 years, at an interest rate of 2.75%. The interest rate is important when these monies were initially obligated, and that, as we just mentioned a few minutes ago, was three years ago, July 2010, the applicable interest rate was 3 1/4. They give you the lower of the rate between the time of obligation of the money and time of closing, and so that has dropped down to 2.75%. So that is benefit to the county. Left in front of, at your spots for each of you, the amortization schedule for this loan, it does show the $339,000 over a 40-year period at 2.75%. A couple of things to point out about that. The 2.75% is substantially lower than you would get if you were to go to the public markets for this kind of credit in a utility system in a rural area. The 40 years is substantially longer also than you would normally see. These are both benefits of going through the federal USDA program for this financing. The other benefit through the USDA in terms of payment is that you can prepay at any time without penalty. There are no protections against prepayment or no bars. So if at any point there was a benefit to the county paying this off early, you certainly can do that. As you see, the annual payments are roughly around $14,000 to $14,500. Importantly, again, just to reiterate what was said a minute ago, the only pledge that the county is making is the system revenues from the North Hurley improvements. The county is not pledging any gross receipts tax. It is not pledging any property taxes. There is no county credit on the line for this bond, which is important. It's a special limited obligation. It is not a lean on to property taxes or any gross receipts taxes. As a practical matter, should there be a shortfall in payment, the USDA cannot come to the county and say, "You need to supplement this with any of your taxing authority." What they would do is require the North Hurley system to, and the county in that context, to increase the system rates that are being charged so that it generates enough money to pay operation and maintenance and debt service. A couple of other things. Most of the ordinance, about half of it, just talks about the mechanics of how the bonds work, creation of the funds, flow of funds, debt service repayment. There also are two reserve funds that are created. One is a debt service reserve. That is for any shortfalls. It's basically a little insurance policy that's funded for equal to one annual principal and interest payment. So if there's ever an inability to cover an annual payment, the USDA can draw on that. And then there is an asset management reserve fund. That is basically related to short-lived assets within the system. So if there is a problem with the system, there are monies available to repair it. The USDA's primary concern is the system remains operational. Both those funds are already funded, is my understanding, so they would not be funded over time. If they are drawn down, you would replenish them going forward. The covenants in the document are consistent with what you would see in any utility financing, and so we're comfortable with that. Just real quick, I want to highlight, and I know that you're going to consider this at your next meeting, this short front-and-back page resolution. This is required by the USDA to comply with their letter of conditions, which is the overall, every criteria that has to be satisfied. Just highlights that you're borrowing $339,000, and then 1 through 16 are standard covenants that are nothing out of the ordinary. The main things to highlight again is that the USDA can require you raise the rates if need be, and should you ever get completely flushed with cash, they could require you repay the loan early so the monies were available for another rural community. Number 17 on the back is really the most important thing. This authorizes acceptance of the grant, which is $980,000. So the total financing package is the $339,000 loan and then a grant of $980,100, so dropped off 100 there. So that's really the most important thing about this two-page resolution, is it authorizes that grant. Happy to answer any questions. This is a very attractive financing as these things go. The program is designed to address rural utility systems such as North Hurley. So again, any questions you have about the ordinance or the resolution, happy to answer those.
I don't have a problem, because it looks like the county manager and the chairman are... Guarantee it. Guarantee it, right? Yeah, no.
Problem, we're long gone.
Commissioner Ramos. That's it, that's it. We see one. All right. Thank you, Mr. Murhead.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this issuance and sale of revenue bonds? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to approve or disapprove ordinance number 1307.
Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1307.
Can I second? The motion is proper second to approve ordinance 1307. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring September 25 through the 29, 2013, as Grant County Fair Days? Randy, you want to read that for us? Thank you.
County of Grant proclamation, whereas the Grant County Fair has been serving the community for over 60 years, and whereas the hallmarks of the fair are education, celebration, and tradition of the Grant County Fair has stood strong in its dedication to the presentation of quality, family-oriented education and entertainment, and whereas the Grant County Fair promotes our community and its resources, and has been a showcase for the arts and talents for local residents of all ages and abilities, and whereas 2013 marks the 65th Annual Grant County Fair, which will be held on September 25 through the 29, 2013, at the fairgrounds located in Cliff, New Mexico, and whereas all Grant County residents and visitors are encouraged to attend and participate in this year's fair activities. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Grant County Board of Commissioners that September 25 through the 29, 2013, be declared as Grant County Fair Days. Passed and approved this 22nd day of August, 2013, in Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Mr. Lawrie, do you want to come down and say something, or are you going to make Barbara do it?
No, I don't need to say that. We're just glad that you could set that great sight for her.
Okay. You want to let these guys take a picture of us giving this to you? You want to see that? Oh, this is... You know, we're going to go ahead and vote on it first, just to find and get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation declaring September 25 through the 29, 2013, as Grant County Fair Days.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve September 25 through the 29, as Grant County Fair Days. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to say that it's awesome, again. It's coming around one more time, and it's been a big influence in a lot of people's lives. I know that I raised animals for the fair when I was a kid, and my family did also, and it's just been a lot of good things for the youth.
Way of life. That's right. Okay. All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Ben, you got your camera? I can get a... This time, if I can get a motion to recess, the Board of County Commissioners, please.
So I'll move recess. Can I second?
The motion and a proper second to recess. All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, okay. At this time, I'll call to order the Grant County canvassing board. First item on the agenda for the Grant County canvassing board is to approve or disapprove the August 19, 2013 special election results.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I've given you a little handout here of the election that was conducted on Monday, August 19, for the grocery receipts tax. The first sheet that you have here is a copy of the certificate of the election. This is a roster of everybody that sent in a ballot. 6,127 total ballots were received by our office. Of those 6,127, 70 ballots were rejected. Either they came in unsigned, or the ballot themselves were not marked. There was a couple that came in torn up. Some were actually torn by the machine, when they opened a postage machine, something like that. So now, we accepted 6,057. That's what we accepted in our office to count for that date.
What percentage of voters is it?
That's 29% voter turnout. We sent out a total of 21,127 ballots. Although the outcome wasn't what I expected, I'm really glad to see the turnout was really, really well. I know when we have mail-out ballots, the turnout usually is a lot higher than if you just have a polling place, and that's why we did it the way we did. I know that there's rumor out there that we had a mail-out ballot due to wanting us to get it passed easier, and there's no such thing, no such truth to that. But the main reason we did have the mail-out ballot is to have more participation, and we did get the participation. That's correct. And just to add to that a little bit, Commissioner Ramos, in elections that you see, high numbers of registered voters voting, a high total, the main factor for that are simply candidates, candidates out there pounding the pavement, shaking bushes, getting people to come in to vote. And for these types of elections, we don't have those candidates out there getting people to come in to vote. So 30% or 29% turnout is pretty decent when you don't have a lot of candidates out there trying to get their people to come in and vote. You know, anytime you have any kind of elections that have high numbers, it's because there was main interest in the candidates. So without a candidate and just a simple question, 29% is pretty good.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
One more question. What is the average, usually, if it's just a bond question and one-day election?
The cost?
No, what is the average percentage of voter turnout?
Depending on what the, if it's just the issue, just one issue, if we were to do it, we would probably get anywhere between 25 to maybe 20% voter turnout.
On a polling place?
On a polling place.
So it improved about 57?
It improved by that. Right. I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot, but you know, that's almost 30% voter turnout.
Can we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the August 19, 2013 special election results.
Second. The motion is proper second to approve the August 19, 2013 special election results. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
I would like to take the floor, James. You bet. It's all in your decision in this motion. You can talk all you want.
Thank you very much, Chairman Caston. And I would like to say hello to Commissioner Hall and Ramos, and all of the staff members who are here. There are a few. We've heard from a couple. And I am Art Martinez, a very longtime resident of Grant County. Came out here to do 30-some years of service at Western, New Mexico University, political science. And I've been, over the 40 years, a very consistent participant in the community affairs, city, county, and what have you. First thing I would want to do is to thank and commend Clerk Samiripa and his board for the fine work that they did with reference to a difficult election. And I won't be long, but I just, like many others, I am greatly inspired, I was and I am still, greatly inspired by the very impressive voter turnout. Very impressive. With the provided by the residents, which is to say, the people, our folks, from every municipality, right, in Grant County, all of them, all the different groupings, and we know very well all about those statistics. But of course, the unincorporated part of Grant County, let us not forget. And I'm sure that we were all uplifted, uplifted and inspired, as I said, by our many friends and our many neighbors. Los vecinos, los amistades todos en el condado y los ciudadanos de el condado de Grant. Un gran turnout que nos ha gustado mucho. Tenemos mucho orgullo con ustedes, with everyone. I hope we're all bilingual in here today. I won't go too much with that. And we're inspired by our friends and neighbors who carefully looked behind and even beyond, I believe, even beyond the barrage of glitz that we did see, week after week. There was a barrage of glitz, let's be frank, and politicians and citizens alike, and that's politics. And there were some questionable political promises made now and then, and people had to take hold of those and think over them very carefully and make their decisions. And that is also part of the political process that we do accept and put up with. Among those voters, the voters were, of course, those 4,134 who brought us across the finish line to one of the most welcome, I'm speaking from inside of me, the most welcome and most important political victories that we have witnessed in quite a long time, I do believe. We were asking whether the public would be accepting a $10 million bond indebtedness and a 25% increase in sales taxes. Had a talk with my brother-in-law out in Colorado, who is a mayor of...
25 of 1%.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, quarter of 1%.
Thank you very much for that. 25 of 1%. And he said that, he said, "That's a hefty request." And now, I do not regret for a moment, and I thought I would say that I do not regret for a moment, that I, early on, had concluded that I must join the efforts of these 4,000 and plus, and all the other voters who were doing their duty. And assisting the defeat of the $10 million bond indebtedness at this time, and the rather hefty request to take money out of our pockets, considerably more money out of our pockets, for also what many have called a regressive sales tax. And it certainly fills that description. When all is said and done, and I'm getting, I'm going to finish up, when all is said and done, I believe, I believe most of us will realize that this victory, this victory by the folks in Grant County, anyone who voted was a winner, but of course, you have the vanquished and the victors. But this victory was indeed primarily from a broad base, and I think we all ought to be proud to say this, it was from a broad base and mix of voters. And these voters pressed forward, especially by those hard, it was pressed forward primarily by those very hard-working gente, people, who have been and still are today, right now, struggling ahead, struggling hard. We all knew this when we got started with this business here.
We're going to need to wrap up.
And, okay. And on a daily basis, to make some headway against the economic disasters that was largely on their minds, economic disasters and hardships, tremendous hardships, that have been hammering away at us for too long. I'll end. There are serious lessons. I offer that there are serious lessons, that all of us, all of us, including politicians and those who are not, can and ought to learn from this particular struggle that took place in our Grant County and our cities. And we need, all of us, to be open and honest to this continuing reality, because it never ends. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If anybody else wants to talk, you're going to have to talk specifically on whether or not you want to approve or disapprove the special election result. This is not a time to rail against the ballot, to rail against the election. The election is over. The voters have spoke. We're good with that. We're going to move on. So if anybody wants to talk specifically on the exact issue of whether or not you want us to approve or disapprove these election results, you're more than welcome to come forward. Please come forward.
My name is Taryll Gurness. Good morning to you all. And I was a proponent for it. I felt that the gross receipts tax was modest. We're pretty much stagnant in this community, from my viewpoint, and we need something to move forward and to stimulate business coming in here. I was rather surprised that I didn't hear anything, or we didn't hear anything, from Senator Morales about it, because he lives in this county and in Silver City in particular. And yeah, I think all these things, we do need to bring more business in here, that's for sure. I think that was one of the reasons why you wanted to remodel the Business and Conference Center. Now, I have a daughter, who it'd be well worth either contracting with her. She's very well-landed. She's a recruiter. I have all the confidence in the world she could bring business here. And she is on LinkedIn. Her name is Natalie Blatnick from Illinois. What she's doing right now is she's recruiting financial advisors, but she's been very active in Rotary, knows a lot of people, and she likes Silver City. She's a 29-year-old young woman. And that's pretty much what I have to say about it. I thought that that tax increase was modest, and it had a lot of benefit for a lot of people. Now, whether you choose, they choose to participate in some of these things, that's always their option. But thank you very much.
Thank you. You're limping, Mr. Baldur. Can we stick to the issue? I really need, that's two in a row that didn't stick to the issue.
Well, I have an appointment coming up very shortly, so I will be succinct as well as terse. I do wish to compliment our county clerk for the way he conducted this election, mail-out election. I would like to make a correction, and it was to the last mail-out election. My wife and I were disavowed, the right of franchise to vote. I brought that to the commissioner's attention, and I wish to correct, make a correction. I went through the process of checking the procedure for whom the ballots were sent to and everything else. And by the time I was able to get to you people for this particular meeting, I believe it was two years ago, the time had passed, and I had to submit a letter to the United States Post Office, and they did not respond. Mr. Samiripa's office was quite correct in the address they had for us as a mailing. So was the address that was on the letter that was returned, the ballot that was returned to Mr. Samiripa's office. The United States Post Office had a problem down there in their mail-sorting room, which is why the ballots never got to the wife and I. In the some 45 years...
In the some 45 years that I have lived at the very same residence, I have been encumbered by three different address changes. Two by the United States Post Office, one by the county. And originally, it was route, it was my name, HCR 88060, Silver City. Then it went to Route 8, Box 278A, Silver City. Now it is 2245, and it does not agree with the county records. Bear Mountain Road. Bear Mountain Road is the name of the road that was, that runs from where Alabama ends out to and above, beyond Ellis Mesa. And this is, this goes back to a 1907 government map. But I do want to correct and thank the county clerk for having the correct address and getting the ballots to us. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. I suggest you approve it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You and I?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just in here. Okay, a motion to adjourn the Grant County canvassing board?
So I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Board of County Commissioners. The only thing left on the agenda is to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, six and five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Standing adjourned.